So, we are back to our annual town meeting. We have six articles to accomplish tonight. So, Madam Clerk?
Article seven.
Article seven is the budget.
Madam Moderator, Article seven, the budget. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate from levy, state, and local receipts the sum of fifty-six million, eight-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars, transfer one-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars from available funds, and transferred nine-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand dollars, one-hundred-and-sixty-eight from Water Pollution Control Enterprise Fund to fund the FY twenty budget as presented in the administration handout.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there anything to be said on the budget?
And just wanted to thank everyone for taking time to be part of our second night of town meeting. And speaking about Article seven, the FY twenty budget, this has by far been the most reviewed article. I'd like to take a moment to thank all those that made the balanced budget possible, school, town staff, everybody's hard work, thank you very much, and also those that worked tirelessly adjusting the plans and programs, and the other, and the boards and committees such as the Board of Selectmen, school committee, sewer commissioners, finance committee, capital planning committee, and all the other dedicated volunteers that were involved with this budget. If you see in the administration handout, you have a breakdown of all the revenues and the expenses. On page is nine is a simple breakdown which shows you our, how we come up with the two-and-a-half percent increase, which is what everybody thinks about, Proposition two-and-a-half. You've got the debt exclusion in there, estimated new growth, and you carry that forward with all our new revenue. One thing, if you're in the finance committee handbook, you can probably see that our net state aid is continuing to decrease, and that's one of the big factors impacting us as the state assessments increase beyond what we get for revenue. Pages ten shows the revenue breakdown, where the percentages are. And then page eleven is a pie chart of the expenses as well, which tells you each and every one of them. So, and on that one, people usually ask, unclassified talks about the Israeli benefits such as health insurance, workers' comp, and all those other items. So, the unclassified doesn't mean hidden costs. So, thank you again for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, what we do and usually how we handle the budget is to go through some of the line items, and I will call them out, and if anyone has a question on any of the particular line item that I mentioned, if you would say hold, we'll hold it. Once we go through it, we'll take a vote on all of the items that were not held, and then we will come back to the ones that were held, and we will allow you to ask questions on those line items, and then at the end, we will take a vote on the overall budget. So, I will go through the line items. Town meeting wages and expenses. To what reason do you rise? State your point. He's on his way.
Madam Moderator, Urban Russell, Precinct Six. In the accounting that we did last, yesterday, we appropriated fifty thousand dollars on a safety matter, and I'm wondering if that is, is that incorporated within the budget?
No.
The fifty thousand dollars that was allocated for the destruction or safety of the project on Cranberry Highway?
No.
The historic site of the first Cape Verdean American?
No. That's not with?
That's not included in the budget at all, so that issue of the destruction of the first Cape Verdean American trading post is not going to be?
It was not in this warrant, it was not in any of the articles. That was done through a transfer in this fiscal year's budget. That already happened last April.
The appropriation of the fifty thousand dollars?
No, the fifty thousand dollars has nothing to do with that, with the taking down of the Cranberry Highway property. That funds was in, is in this current year's budget, and had nothing to do with any of the articles presented last night or tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Town meeting wages and expenses, selectmen's wages and expenses, town administrators' wages and expenses, finance committee expenses, reserve fund, town accountant wages and expenses, audit assessors' wages and expenses, treasurer's wages and expenses, general services' wages and expenses, legal services, personnel services' wages and expenses, information management technology wages and expenses, information management technology communications, town clerk wages and expenses, elections and registration wages and expenses, planning and community development wages and expenses, sick leave bonus wages, police wages, police expenses and capital, inspectional services wages, inspectional services expenses, division of natural resources wages and expenses, municipal maintenance, public buildings wages, municipal maintenance and public buildings, snow and ice wages and expenses, streetlights general, border health wages and expenses, council on aging wages and expenses, commission on disabilities, veterans council, library wages and expenses, historic district commission, historical committee, education, net school spending, non-net school spending, fixed costs, debt exclusion, new school debt, debt principal, debt interest, short-term debt interest, other costs, veterans assessments and serpent assessment, employee benefits, Plymouth County retirement, layuna, workers' comp, town insurance, unemployment, medical insurance, life insurance, FICA and Medicare. No holes on any of these line items. Does anyone wish to speak? Seeing no one, I will call for a vote on the budget. Requires a majority vote. The motion before you is to raise and appropriate from levy, state, and local receipts the amounts that are shown before you up on the screen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes unanimously. Article five. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the, excuse me, thank you, I move that the town hear reports regarding the redevelopment authorities, zoning committee, and any other reports from committees who may deem it necessary.
Have a second? This article requires a majority vote, and once we take the vote, I believe we do have a report from redevelopment. All those in favor of Article five to hear the reports, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous. Do we have a report from the redevelopment authority?
Yes, I'll make a very brief one. Earlier this afternoon, the redevelopment authority met, and we chose Saturday, June first, at ten o'clock as the tentative date to hold a public workshop meeting in the town hall auditorium to go over the redevelopment strategy that was recently produced for us by FXM Associates. This document came about as the result of a detailed study, some focus groups that were put together. Essentially what it is, is to look at the town as a whole. It identifies four priority areas for the redevelopment authority to focus its attention upon, and it's very important that people understand what the recommendations are and how the redevelopment authority is going to move forward. So, I would encourage everybody to come to the June first meeting at ten o'clock in the town hall auditorium, and that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Titlebaum. If you would, if you just could make a report so that the town clerk could have something in her minutes, I'm sure she'd appreciate it. I did not hear from zoning or any other committees that wished to make a report, so we will move on. Article fourteen. May I have a motion, please?
Article fourteen, delete charter review committee. I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the Massachusetts Legislature for special legislation to delete Section seven dash one B, charter changes, periodic review, from Article seven of the Wherehan Home Rule Charter.
Do I have a second?
Second.
To speak to the article?
Yes, this came about once the, we realized that we were, the Board of Selectmen realized we, that we were once again in a year ending in the digit nine, which triggers the selection and appointment of a charter review committee. Those of us who were around back in 2010 can recall a six-night town meeting, thirty-one articles, forty-five? What, did you stick some in the special warrant, too? Forty-five. Selectmen Slavin had the unfortunate experience of chairing that committee back then and being unjustifiably blamed for a lot of the contents of what came before town meeting. Many of the articles back then called for fundamental change to our form of government, calling, for example, for a mayoral city council forum, or a representative town meeting forum, and so on and so forth. These articles were all actually illegal under state law because the only way to change an elected position, a Board of Selectmen position, for example, the only way to move to a precinct system where Selectmen would represent a precinct, or to change to a mayoral or a city council form of government, is to do it through a charter commission. You can't do that through a charter review committee. Secondly, writing law is a technical skill that requires years of training, the mind. Simply put, you wouldn't send your iPhone to a remote Amazonian tribe to be repaired, and neither should you expect untrained citizens to successfully come up with ways to revamp the document that functions as the town's constitution. And again, the 2010 town meeting mess, if you will, is proof of that. Furthermore, under state law, the charter can be amended via petition article, so there's already a process in place for citizens who feel that something in the charter should be changed to present such a change to town meeting. As an example of that, I'll refer you to Article twenty-three, which is a petition article that you'll hear tonight to amend the charter. Now, I don't support that article, but there it is on the warrant, serving as proof that we already have a process in place should citizens want to change something in the charter.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the finance committee?
Yes, Madam Moderator, finance committee does not recommend approval of this article, zero, seven, zero. And if I may address the article?
May I have the vote? Sorry, I was distracted here, I was on another article that's coming up. The vote and recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends approval of this article four, zero, one.
Mr. Pidgen.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. In deference to my learned colleague from the Selectmen's, I wish to reiterate that this is my government. I have a right to change it anytime I choose. I don't have any qualifications other than I pay my taxes here, I'm a resident here. So, when I decide I want to change it, I can do a petition, or I have written into the charter that I, every ten years, have an opportunity to do so, to rethink, is there anything wrong? If the volunteers are sufficient, the Selectmen call immediate, call a committee, appoint a committee, and they go forward with the review. If not, they don't call a committee, and we go on to the next ten years. I don't think that a lawyer or an attorney, and with all due respect, sir, has the right to say they're the only ones qualified to tell me how I want my government run and who's going to run it. Now, I come from a very small town the other end of the state, and this, as I mentioned, and we opened, excuse me, our meeting yesterday, we have a unique form of government here. I'd like to keep it as such. I think it works pretty good. Sometimes we have a few bumps, sometimes we have that particular individual that we say, oh, my God, they're going to come and speak, as Carver did last night. But still, that's what we do here, and I think that's kind of nice, and I would urge you, please, to maintain the same form we have now. Thank you.
Am I right?
Yes, thank you. Sandy Slavin, Precinct Three. It wasn't that long ago we heard a Selectman say only he and the town accountant, town lawyer can understand and adjust our charter, that the rest of us have, don't have the capacity of understanding, and I totally hit the television. But it's our right to review the charter. It is our right to say to the Selectmen what we want our government to be and to do. One Selectman said the other day, well, if they don't, town doesn't like it, they can vote us out. That happens every three years, and I'm saying that's not the way to take care of this. Yes, the last time this was reviewed, and I'm sorry, Alan Newer, the chair, and there were a lot of them, and, but that's just what happens. Yes, not all of them would have been valid and continued, but at least they were discussed, they were brought forward, some were voted on, some were denied, some were further studied, but it gave us, the taxpayers, a chance to say to the Selectmen and to everybody in town, we would like to make these changes to the charter. Now, my question is, how many people have put in an application for the nine slots?
To answer the question?
Three.
The answer is three?
Three. We need nine for this committee. So, anybody in the audience, anybody listening, please put your application in. I've put mine in, and I've been told I will not be appointed because of how I stand on some things. So, we need seven more. Please, step up and tell them, the Selectmen, that we want some changes. Maybe we want changes, but we won't know until we review.
Thirty seconds.
Please defeat. Thank you.
Am I right?
Hi, I'm Mike Flaherty, Precinct One. Thank you very much, finance committee, and thank you, Ms. Slavin, for speaking as well. Amen. I don't really have much to add to that. I wish this to be defeated as well. The only argument I, the biggest argument I heard for, for passing this was that the last one screwed up so badly in that they submitted a bunch of illegal articles. Doesn't have to happen that way. We could, you know, run through town council and vet them before they get further. So, Ms. Slavin, I didn't know there was only three members that applied. I'm happy to apply. It's only every ten years, and it is, it's our right. I mean, why would we give up our, our, our right? I urge defeat. Thank you.
Thank you. On my left?
Angela Dunham, Precinct Three. I don't believe that I could add anything more to what has been previously spoken, and also thank you to finance committee for standing behind our rights to speak up for town government. I don't really appreciate being compared to an Amazonian tribe, and if I am one, then I am proud to be one, one of the many volunteers that step up to make this a better community. I urge everyone to defeat this.
Am I right?
Joyce Bakayaki, District, Precinct Four. I'd also like to just agree with the previous speakers and thank Mrs. Slavin for her words. I also, I was one of the applicants, one of the three applicants, and I also heard here tonight and at a previous selectmen's meeting about how we are not as qualified as some others who, who might review the charter, and I'm offended by that. And I'd also like to point out that the authors of the charter that we are discussing were not attorneys. They were, they were regular citizens of the town, just like we all are here tonight. Thank you.
On my left?
Linda Sharp, Precinct Three. Can you just tell me when the deadline for applying for that committee is?
Sorry, couldn't hear you.
You would go to the Selectmen's office and fill out an application?
The deadline?
I'm sorry?
Deadline?
I don't believe there is a deadline at this point.
I can explain.
What is it? December thirty-first, I stand corrected.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Slavin?
Good evening, everybody. The one vote that was abstained was me, obviously. I ran the charter review committee as picked by the Board of Selectmen back in 2009. The problem was, at that time, the particular Selectmen, they kind of picked and chose who they wanted, so it kind of skewed the initial first results. We were basically put in place for eighteen months, so what we did is I had everybody come back and review everything, and we did come up with about forty-five articles to modify and change the charter. The initial attempt was to go to a mayor and town council, which is a pretty drastic change for a first-time change. This actually can be done through what they call a special act process, a complement page. We had a lawyer that was available to us at no charge and explained how we could do it. The problem I have is I've been announcing this charter review committee as chair for the last six months, actually into 2018, and nobody has stepped up, which kind of bothered me. The original group that I had at the time we did this, we had a doctor, we had a lawyer, we had a professor, town clerk, et cetera. We had a very highly skilled group of people. We put a tremendous amount of time into it. It wasn't, you know, frivolous type of operation. We have a piece in there which says citizens can get together?
Thirty seconds.
And do a citizen's petition article anytime they want to do a charter change. We've been, over the last ten years, constantly making charter changes. For me, this is, it's up to the audience here what they want to do. I personally, you know, have had the experience, and it does work, but again, I'm very discouraged when I only have three people and six months step up, and what I've actually gone after people and asked, and nobody's done anything. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Am I right? Mr. Flaherty, I believe you have about a minute left.
Thank you. The previous speaker just mentioned that part of the problem the last time around was that, you know, the Selectmen picked and chose, and we just heard a previous person get up to this microphone and said that she was essentially preemptively denied. I hope that's not going on. We need, there's some quality people in this room and beyond that could serve this board, and I hope that they have an open mind, and we'll, we'll allow people to serve on this who deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator, just for a point, a point of order.
State your point.
The point of order is, as far as this committee goes, there has been no discussion by the Board of Selectmen at any meeting, et cetera, about anybody at all in this, because until we have at least nine applications, we don't start anything at all. You know, we really want more than nine because we want to have a choice. Thank you.
On my left?
Hi, John Frederickson, I'm in District Five, and I'm also on the Board of Library Trustees, and if you really want to have a lot of people realize that these, this charter change committee needs people, I would suggest contacting the library and having them put out something with a thing that says, okay, this is what is involved, and we are looking for this range of people. The library does that every five years to sort of review its own practices, and they're really, really good at getting the word out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article fourteen? Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote. Because this article is a petition through the legislature, it only requires a majority vote. All those in favor of Article fourteen, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Article fourteen fails. May I have a motion, please?
Article twenty, that would be me. I know that the town vote to transfer from receipts reserved for appropriation sales of cemetery lots and graves, the sum of sixty-five-hundred dollars, said some to be expended by the cemetery commissioners to retain contractual services to add in the process of ascertaining and claiming ownership of unclaimed grave sites, and for the care, improvement, and embellishment of the three cemeteries, subject to the approval of Board of Selectmen as provided by GLC one-one-four S three A.
Do I have a second? Thank you. That GLC, that's General Law Chapter one-fourteen, Section three A, in case the voters were wondering what that means. To speak to the article?
Thank you. The cemetery commissioners voted to request a transfer of funds from the sales of cemetery lots and graves account to continue the work of organizing and upgrading the cemetery records. Transfer of these funds will have, have no impact on the annual budget. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval of this article five-zero-zero.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the finance committee?
Finance committee voted approval of the article seven-zero-zero.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article twenty? Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote. It requires majority vote. Article twenty is to transfer from receipts reserved for appropriation, as is before you on the screen, for the cemetery lots and graves. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous. I believe Article twenty-three is a petition article. May I have your motion, please?
Sandy Slavin, Precinct Three. I move that the town vote to insert the following in chapter, in Chapter Article Two, Section four, subsection C, after the word subsection B, or that it has been approved by the Community Preservation Committee. The complete sentence is, "The subject submitted to the Board of Selectmen shall be placed on the warrant for the spring or fall town meetings by a majority of vote of the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Section ten of Chapter thirty-nine of the General Laws, provided, however, that a subject submitted pursuant to Clause two or Clause three or subsection B, or that it has been approved by the Community Preservation Committee shall be placed on the warrant for the spring or fall town meeting automatically."
Do I have a second? I have a second to speak to the article?
To be honest, to be transparent, I am the co-chair of CPC. I am the chair of many other committees in town. This was my article. It was never discussed at any CPC meeting. It was never discussed with any CPC members. This is totally mine. I just wanted to be transparent. In 2002, when the town accepted Community Preservation Act, the law was said that the Preservation Committee shall make recommendations to the legislative body, et cetera, and that their articles be placed on the warrant. That is what we agreed to, that they shall be placed on the warrant. And up until 2016, everything that had been submitted by CPC had been placed on the warrant. Now, not everything gets passed. We know that. Webster Hall didn't get passed, the smokestack at the old car barn didn't get passed, but they all met requirements and a valid under CPC expenditures, but... But, uh, I just wanted to remind this body that in two thousand and sixteen, the selectmen failed to approve submitting an article for four units at Agawam Village for four-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand. The excuse was, well, the state should give us more money, and therefore, we shouldn't pay for it ourselves. But there's no way the state's going to care about four units in our own housing units, so that was a reason why it wasn't voted on to be given to this body. Another reason was behind the scene, there was some talk about another project on Main Street, and, uh, maybe the selectmen wanted to keep the CPA funds to support that project on Main Street, which never happened. Two thousand and seventeen fall, uh, units were submitted for four-hundred, five-hundred-and-four-thousand. The selectmen voted not to carry it forward. One of the reasons was it's too expensive. That's too much money to pay. Well, guess what? We're now asking six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for those same four units that we could have had for five-hundred-thousand. And in fall of two thousand and eighteen, the request was made again, plus a citizen's article was submitted. The reason the CPA article was not submitted is because the selectmen said one page would make the warrant article too big. But there is a citizen's article that will take care of it. But we all know, most of the times, a citizen's article is flawed, and it was, and it didn't pass. So we had three years of trying to get units into Agawam, and this past year, the selectmen voted. What I'm asking for in this petition article is that they automatically, once approved and vetted by the Community Preservation Committee, all articles be submitted to the warrant so that the body can approve how their money is spent. Take a look at your tax bill. You see that thing called CPA? That's your money going to the Community Preservation Committee to spend for articles and projects. But if you don't get a chance to vote on it, that's not fair. It's our money, and I think we should always have a chance to say yea and nay. If the selectmen don't like what is being submitted, they can stand up in front of us, all of us, and say why they oppose that particular warrant article. Let us be the decider as to how our funds are spent. Thank you.
Selectmen Slavin?
This is episode thirty-four, Slavin versus Slavin.
Would you like me to follow you home tonight, just to be sure that-
No, the question is, who's sleeping in the garage tonight? Neil Sandy. The issue I have with this is really simple. I understand what, that, you know, Community Preservation, the monies come from three percent, over a hundred thousand dollars of our taxes. It goes into a fund we match with the state, and we get more money back, et cetera. But the question in this particular article where I have a problem with it is, we're picking one particular group out of all the different areas that the selectmen have control in order to make sure things come before the town meeting, that are financially stable, et cetera. And this particular case here, if this article was written that it basically took the selectmen's ability to stop anything, in general, all of it, then I don't think I'd have as much of an objection as having almost like a spot zoning type thing where picking one group is okay and everybody else is wrong. That's not correct either. If they want to come back with an article, citizens, whatever, that changed it, so it's fair to everybody, that's fine, but to pick one group out doesn't seem right. Thank you.
On my left? Angela Dunham, Precinct Three. I agree one hundred percent with everything that Mrs. Slavin said. I urge you to pass this article. Thank you. Mr. Tatterbaum?
Yes, uh, it was just two years ago that the selectmen put on a warrant, an article for a charter change, that, uh, did bring the charter in line with state law. Under the General Laws, the selectmen essentially serve, uh, in all instances as sort of the guardians of the warrant, and their vote is required to put every article that appears on the warrant, uh, in order for it to, to appear there, except for citizen's petition articles. Uh, that's the one exception, and, you know, ten of you can get together during an annual town meeting and a hundred in a special and write your own article and get it on the warrant. In two thousand and seventeen, as I recall, that article passed en masse unanimously. Now, two years later, essentially over one issue, uh, which is this Housing Authority article, uh, you know, we're being asked to, uh, turn all that aside and make an exception for one committee. Uh, back in the, uh, in the fall this past year, uh, the issue with the article that was presented by Community Preservation for the Housing Authority units was that the article contained language that was illegal. It would have, uh, it would have restricted, uh, who could live there, and you can't take state CPA money and decide, uh, who's going to live there, whether they're in town or out of town. Uh, the petition article was flawed because unfortunately, a majority of the Community Preservation Committee signed it, and they put themselves in jeopardy of an open meeting law violation. Now, nobody was ever going to pursue that violation, but that's why that article was withdrawn. And tonight, we're being asked by the chairman of the same committee-
Time.
-uh, to, uh, allow her and her committee to essentially stick articles on when we've had flawed articles in the past.
Thank you. On my left? Mr. Heaney?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Bill Heaney, Precinct One. I, I find this article interesting for a lot of reasons. Um, the first is, we just voted down, uh, an article that would have eliminated the Charter, uh, Commission, uh, or Committee, and, uh, and the reason to do that was that that was our opportunity to, uh, to make changes to the charter. And here we have a citizen's petition, uh, that, by the way, is making a change, is proposing a change to the charter. Uh, we've got that opportunity, uh, all the time. We've always had it all the time, as, as evidenced by this article. Um, I, I agree with, uh, Selectmen Slavin that, uh, to make a charter change that benefits one committee over all other committees is, is a huge risk for this body, uh, and, uh, and, and something that I don't think we want to do at all. Um, and, and the last thing is that, uh, this committee, uh, as evidenced by this article, has the ability to, uh, put any article on the warrant through the citizen's petition process. Uh, so, so if you think that an article is not going to pass because of the selectmen don't like it for whatever reason, you can always have a citizen's petition, again, as evidenced by, by this, uh, particular article. So I, I would urge, uh, to vote this down because I, I think it's flawed in, in so many reasons, uh, so many ways, and there's, uh, going to be a charter committee, uh, I guess in the next few months, if we get enough volunteers. So again, I urge, uh, this be voted down.
On my left?
Uh, Mike Flaherty, thank you, uh, Madam Moderator, and, and thank you again very much, Ms. Slavin. Uh, this article has my full-throated support. Um, I saw Ms. Slavin appear, I think it was before the Finance Committee, and, and make her case, and, and everything she said made sense. It, the, our, our CPC funds, this is a body that, that is very deliberative. They do their homework. I mean, not everyone's perfect, yes, sometimes things can be flawed, and, and, and you sort that out, or ultimately, the state does. But this is, this is our money, and, and it shouldn't be held to three, uh, three people, a majority vote on the selectmen to, to keep us from voting for it at town meeting. That's all, that's all this does, is allow this to go before the body, not just, you know, a majority of selectmen. I urge approval. Thank you.
On my right?
Yes, Urban Russell, Precinct Six, and I'm very much in support of this article. The CPC is a unique committee. It's not the typical committee you would consider in the town. They're the only ones with the, a larger appropriation in dispensing of, of funds for the benefit of the community. So, I mean, this is not your casual committee that you would casually think of. So I'm supportive of the, the CPC. I mean, initially, when they came to, to pass, I, I was very reluctant to, to having that restriction of, of being taxed and having the state reimburse us, but it's been working well, uh, and the state hasn't reneged on their portion, and, and I think that the CPC has done a, a job in, in, uh, operating very well, so I think that they deserve the articles on our warrant. Thank you.
Mr. Pidgen?
Madam Moderator, thank you. In the process of putting articles on the warrant, there's the petitioner, but then there's the prerogative of the selectmen, in which case they have a choice of whether or not to put anything on the warrant. This is a filter process, a screening process. When it comes to my committee, the Finance Committee, it is irrelevant to us, the legality, who signed it, or anything. That is the responsibility of the selectmen. That is why they have that prerogative of making the choice of which article is eligible to appear on the warrant. They don't make a decision as to the worth of the request, but more the legality to it appears on the warrant. As we could come here this evening, approve of an, an article, and then find that it was, it's illegal in its context, the way it's presented. So it's a valuable process that goes through. We have a series of check and balances, so please, let it remain in place. Yes, we disagree with our learning colleagues over in the selectmen, and that's what makes the government interesting, but the process works. So I urge you to disapprove this article.
On my right?
Corey Tripp, Precinct Six. I don't understand why, if a CPC article comes forward to the selectmen and they see the legality's wrong, why we can't work together to make it worded correctly and then put it on the warrant.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article twenty-three? Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote. Changes to the charter require a two-thirds vote. I will try for unanimous. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Chair is in doubt. I am going to ask the tellers to come forward. All those in favor, please hold up your cards.
On my right?
Six. Uh, six?
On my left? On my left?
Seven.
Seven? In the center?
Eighteen.
Eighteen? All those opposed, please hold up your cards, be counted. On my right?
Seventeen, one-seven.
Uh, one?
On my left?
Six.
Five.
We have thirty-seven in the affirmative and twenty-nine in the negative. The article does not meet the two-thirds vote, so the article fails. Article fifteen.
Yes, Madam Article, Article fifteen, town meeting process. I move that the town vote to take certain town meeting-related actions by means of a petition to the legislature for special legislation to amend the Wareham Charter substantially as printed in the warrant.
Do I have a second? May I have the vote and recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
Um, Board of Selectmen recommends approval of this Article five-zero-zero.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval of this Article seven-zero-zero.
Thank you. To speak to the article?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. Uh, by way of introduction, this article was substantially drafted by town council. If passed, the article would remove the forty-five-day posting and printing requirement for the warrant before the start of town meeting. Currently, that start date is the first Tuesday in April, because the annual town election is actually Article One on the town meeting warrant, so that's when town meeting starts, not the fourth Monday in April, which is when the business portion starts. It would also push the town election date back to the first Tuesday in May, which would mean that newly-elected members of town government wouldn't have to dive right into their town meeting rolls three weeks after first being elected, with all due respect to Mr. Manis, who seems to have adapted quite well. It would also allow election voters to consider what they might have just heard from the candidates at town meeting when they go to the polls in May. The primary reason for the proposed change is to lengthen the time for the Board of Selectmen to prepare the warrant, which would cut down on the number of so-called placeholder articles. Presently, we end up closing the warrant in mid-February, which is over two months before town meeting. This too-early deadline makes it harder for the planning board and other bodies to hold public hearings, and results in town meeting attendees being bombarded with a confusing array of handouts. New deadlines for closing and posting serving the warrant will be the second Monday in March and the last Monday in September for the spring and fall annual town meeting warrants respectively, and twenty-one days before any special town meeting. That is more than adequate time for the public to read the warrant, understand its contents, and show up to town meeting educated and ready to act. This was actually done, uh, you know, it was written by town council. Uh, we consulted with Madam Moderator on this. Uh, we also consulted with the Finance Committee. I, I understand they may have an amendment to this. Depending on how we, how we read, uh, what they're going to do, that may or may not be something that'll work in the context of what we're trying to do here. But really, what we're trying to avoid is, uh, some of the confusion, for example, we had last fall, uh, and in particular, on the Tremont Nail Factory overlay district. That was something that, an opportunity arose to do things out there. We learned about it in August. Uh, we couldn't get anything done in time before we closed the warrant in September that was really substantive in terms of coming up with a fully-vetted, fully-heard, uh, presented-at-hearing article. And so we came in here, uh, we had some initial confusion versus the handout, which is what you should have been looking at versus what was in the Finance Committee booklet, which was old news. And, uh, at that time, coming out of that process, even though we successfully got the article through and people finally figured out what the hell we were trying to do, uh, I, I just, I just spoke with my fellow members on the board here and said, we can do better than this. We don't need to, uh, post these things forty-five days out in a precinct. Uh, we don't need to, uh, continue to have the issue of an election before the town meeting, when we can simply just push, uh, it back to May, uh, which, in the year it would take effect, by the way, it, it wouldn't shorten anybody's term, it would actually lengthen somebody's term if they were already elected. That, that's part of what the special act would state. So I would urge passage of this so that we can, uh, have a more orderly process leading up to town meeting. Thank you.
On my right?
Yes, thank you, Sandy Slavin, Precinct Three. Read it nineteen times, I totally support it. I have one question. When is fall annual town meeting? If I go to the charter, it says the last four months in the year, or the date identified in the bylaw. Well, I went to the bylaw, including this changes, and cannot find a date anyplace for a fall town meeting, but I did find reference to the warrant being done at least twenty-one days. Is that what it says? I'm trying to think. The meeting will be adjourned until the fourth Monday of April. I'm missing it, sorry. I had it. Alan and I talked about this, and that's why I'm sleeping in the garage. But it's one of those things that I don't understand when fall town, fall annual town meeting is. They talked about a September twenty-first date for a warrant to be published, but if it's last four days in the year, and the date's supposed to be in the bylaw, so we could have our fall town meeting October, November, December, September, October, November, December, that's four, and the date's in the bylaw, can't find it in the bylaw. Can someone tell me? It says the Monday, the first town meeting- It says the Monday, the first town meeting, the annual town meeting, for the fourth Monday in April, but I find no date for the fall. But I do support the article. Thank you.
Yeah, I can clarify that. Division one, Article one, Section one, it says the fall town meeting shall be held on the fourth Monday of October, and that was in Article fourteen of the October twenty-one, two thousand and two town meeting, approved by the Attorney General, December two, two thousand and two. It's right in the bylaw.
Thank you. Mr. Pigeon?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move to amend Article fifteen in the town meeting process in Section two-dash-D, parentheses D, line four, and change the words, "second Monday in March," to read "second Tuesday in February." And also, in Section two-four, parentheses D, line seven, change the words to "from twenty-one calendar days" to read "thirty-five calendar days." As has been presented by Selectmen Title Bob, it is very convenient for them in the timeframe in preparing these articles. Unfortunately, we also have a responsibility to vet all the articles, and in addition to that, we have to produce a report. Now, the report you have in your hand has to be to the printer by April first, so we can have it available to you and to the public one week before this meeting convenes. Now, that means that there's three to four weeks there, cut out of the whole process, and that means, however, we would have approximately two weeks before we would present this to the printer, to repair it, et cetera, et cetera, and it takes us several days to do so. We do this only twice a year, so we're reasonably adept at it, but it takes us a little time. What we appreciate would be additional time to do so. These changes will put us back into the same timeframe that we have currently, and, believe me, at the end of March, we are rushed to try and get it done to the printer. I appreciate your consideration, and I encourage you to please adopt these changes. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Just give me... When making motions to articles, the moderator has to decide whether a motion is within scope. And generally, within the scope is it downward, not an upward? And whether this constituted downward or upward is my call. Just give me ten seconds, just to let me think about this. I'm going to allow the amendment, and I'll tell you why. I agree with Mr. Pigeon to some extent on a timeframe, and this is within, the article has a timeframe, and I believe that this is just another timeframe. So, I'm going to allow the motion. So, we have a motion for an amendment to amend Article fifteen to change the words in Section two-four-D, line four, "second Monday in March," to read "the second Tuesday in February." That would mean that information has to come to the Finance Committee by the second Tuesday in February, to allow them to have time to do what they need to do. And then, in Section two-four-D, line seven, change the words "twenty-one calendar days" to read "thirty-five calendar days." And I hope I'm not out of line in saying this, but with electronic voting coming, we are going to have to get all the information to the technical director for that at least two weeks prior to town meeting. So, I'm going to allow this motion as just a time change. Mr. Title Bob, speak to the motion only.
Yes. I understand the Finance Committee does have a compressed amount of time in which to review the articles that come to it from the Board of Selectmen. However, there is nothing preventing the Finance Committee from reviewing articles that are presented. For example, the housekeeping articles, they're the same articles every single year. There's no reason why they can't review those articles as the selectmen put them on the warrant, once we open the warrant, which typically occurs in January. So, there's no reason why they can't get ahead of the game. They don't have to wait until the entire warrant is produced to start their work. The other issue is, again, one of the purposes of this proposed charter change was to give proponents of articles time to go, for example, in the case of zoning articles, time to get before the Planning Board, time to get the public input from the Planning Board hearing, time to change their articles, to reflect any wisdom they receive from the Planning Board hearings, and then present them in final form to the Board of Selectmen to go on the warrant, and then to go to the Finance Committee. The amendment, as I understand it, would substantially keep the date for closing the warrant the same, which is in early February. Regarding the concerns they have with their printer, I'm sorry, but I don't think we can allow a printer to determine when we function as a government. If the printer needs a month to get things done, then perhaps it's time to find a different printer, or perhaps it's time to return to printing this document in-house, as we used to do. So, I would urge defeat of the amendment. Again, the selectmen will work with the Finance Committee to make sure that they're not jammed up, you know, right at the end of March with a ton of articles.
Mr. Trupiano, to speak to the amendment?
And I actually have a question. Sandy Slavin, for Sandy Slavin, please. When does CPC have to have their stuff done by? Isn't it December?
To answer the question only.
Wouldn't this be problematic?
To answer the question, we require our grant request to be in Week two, December... December, wait, I'll try it again. Week two, December, yeah, Tuesday, Week two, December, because our articles must be submitted in first of... When did you normally give us our time? I think the first of February, isn't it?
I think so.
I think that's what our time is now. That's why we asked for our articles in Week two, December, to give us several weeks meetings to discuss them, to get the articles into town meeting early February. So, this isn't changing their dates, I don't think. Am I answering your question?
Yes, you are.
I didn't think so.
And we also set committee deadlines a week before as well of the deadline, too. So, this could be problematic. This may not work. You know, it's something, I mean, I don't care, we can try it and see if it works, but I think it may be a problem. It may cause more problems than it's worth. I think the simple thing that we put in, I think, would help a lot, and... So, anyway, I don't know. I think you should defeat the amendment and go for the motion, at least at this point. I think this needs a little more refinement than to just kind of throw this on town meeting floor right away. It's the first I've heard of it, and I know a lot of the members here haven't heard about it, so it may be problematic, and we'd have to look at it, if you get my drift. Thank you.
Mr. Heaney?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Bill Heaney, Precinct one. I'm not surprised that this book actually takes a month to print, because it's actually a lovely book, and, you know, people have taken a lot of time and effort to put a lot of information in it. But I, and I may be the only one, but after town meeting, I toss it, and I feel bad tossing this, but I don't save them. I felt much better when we had the ones that we did in-house or just kind of mimeographed in some way. Those were easy to toss. They just went in the recycle bin. But maybe we could save a few bucks and go back to the way it was and get it done overnight and save three weeks on the process. That's just my opinion. Thanks.
Mr. Pigeon, do you have a minute?
Thank you. In response, I am hurt that you cast it off when you go home. But I'll make allowances. With respect to the printer, agreed, it's a lot of information. We're trying to put out a class act for you. You deserve that much, we feel. As to the printer, and yes, he does a lot of other reports. As a matter of fact, that particular printer does a town report, which will come out in September. But I might also let you know that our last fall meeting, we attempted to do that in-house. The printer, the copier broke down twice, and we just couldn't do it, and we couldn't do it reliably to make sure we could get it out in time, so I had to go outside, I went over to Staples, and we had them do the printing. As far as getting the information in time, we've tried to do that. Oftentimes, the selectmen have not decided whether or not to allow an article on the warrant, because they need additional information, so we have to wait for them to finish. Also, I might point out, you have a flyer this evening that regards the budget itself. Oftentimes, these boilerplate articles, as they refer to them, are in constant flux, and the figure we receive is at last minute oftentimes. It's no fault of anybody, but that's the process we have to deal with.
Mr. Pigeon, your time is up.
Thank you.
Gentleman on my left?
I guess that's me, though I'm not a gentleman, so, okay. Jonathan Frederickson, Precinct five. I just have a question. I take it that the reason you would like the extra time is it's not just the printing, it's actually the research and the discussion that has to go into whether or not you vote to approve or not. Is that right?
To answer the question?
That is correct.
Okay, and I have one more question for the selectmen. Did you talk to the Finance Committee about this shortened time before you made the original article, not the amendment, but the original?
To answer the question? To answer the question, Mr. Slavin.
The answer to the question is fairly simple. We've been talking back and forth with the moderator and the Finance Committee over the last three or four years to try and get this simplified, because articles do come late, et cetera. The problem that it has is that a lot of times, the Finance Committee doesn't want to discuss an article till the Board of Selectmen votes on it, which is really not necessary, which also delays the process as well. So, the answer is very simple, that there is ways to clean this up. We really need to try this, see how it works. If it doesn't work, we come back, next town meeting, we can adjust it easy enough, but the whole problem is, is that we're getting articles late, we're getting hearings late, et cetera, and this idea is to make this better for everybody here, so when you get here, everything is dialed in proper and not with questions. Thank you.
Selectmen Trupiano?
I just want to ask a question of the town administrator about how the other towns are doing this. Do you have any information regarding that?
I took a sample from a couple of the other surrounding communities and just show you the different deadlines. Bourne closes their warrant on April 12th for their May 7th town meeting. Sandwich does April 18th for their May 6th town meeting. Carver, who may be, given what they did last night, we don't want to do the same, but they close theirs on April 12th for an April 22nd town meeting. Yeah, that one's a little tight, but, folks, I need some time before the warrant's closed as well. We don't get the, usually, the governor's budget numbers until January. I know we do that as a placeholder, but they're asking to change that, not have as many placeholders. Having this extra time is very helpful for us, for sitting down with our departments. We consider town meeting some of the most important times of the year, and that's on top of the normal duties of the folks you see over there. So, any extra time we could get, we would really appreciate it. And I understand, respect, and need the Finance Committee, you know? We need their support, but I would appreciate any extra time and help we could get, and I understand it, and maybe we can send Chief Walsec over to the printer next time they hold us up, to get him a little closer, a little faster, so... Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said to Mr. Pigeon's amendment? We have an amendment to Article fifteen to change the words in Section two-four-D, line four, to the second Monday in March, from the second Monday in March, to read the second Tuesday in February, and to change the words from twenty-one calendar days to thirty-five calendar days. This only requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed?
No.
The amendment fails. We are back to the main motion, Article fifteen. Is there anything further to be said on Article fifteen? This is a charter change. And it requires a... It's a petition to the legislature. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Passes by a majority. Ladies and gentlemen, we have finished all our articles, I believe, town square.
Move to adjourn.
I would make a motion to dissolve the meeting, not adjourn.
You don't want to come back tomorrow night?
No.
Move to dissolve.
Move to dissolve.
I have a motion to dissolve in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very, very much for coming.
Thank you very much, folks.